Time is now 6:00 PM. It's time to get our meeting underway. Before we get started here this evening, we'd just like to make you aware that if you would like to address the board during the comments and concerns section of the meeting, please fill out a comments card and get that to myself or Mr. Harris or any commissioner up here and they'll see that I get to it and I can go over it for that point in time during the meeting. I'd like to ask that you put your cellphones on silence. Board members, turn your vibration off as well due to the microphones. Before we get started again, we'd like to turn our attention to County Administrator, Mr. Randy Harris. He's going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. Please rise.
Lay your heads, please. Father, we praise you and we thank you for your love and your mercy, your grace, your kindness. We thank you that you bless us so mightily and abundantly. We thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening and deal with issues that affect our community. We ask you to give us all wisdom and guidance and counsel from above. We praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for leading us this evening. For the record, today is August 2nd, 2016, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting for the Board of County Commissioners in Swanee County. Item number one on our agenda this evening is approval of the meeting minutes for the July 19th regularly scheduled meeting. Board members, are there any changes or corrections that you'd like to see to these minutes?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman, or all of your motions approved.
Motion made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent part of our agenda this evening. It's been requested that items number three and nine be pulled. Number three be pulled to be considered at another meeting, number nine to be pulled for individual consideration this evening. Are there any other items that any board member would like to pull?
I have one question about number seven.
Okay, number seven will be pulled for individual consideration. Are there any others? Hearing none, I need a motion for approval for items two, four through six, eight, and 10.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. As noted previously, note item number three, we consider it another meeting. Item number seven was requested to be pulled by Commissioner Sessions, and I'll read it into the record. Authorization to purchase new truck from Allen J. Chevrolet from Florida Sheriff's Contract in the amount of $32,632.25 for fire rescue to be funded from fire contingency. Commissioner Sessions, you have our attention.
Yeah, I have a question. My only question is, is this something we just missed on the budget? Or is this something that just...
The current vehicle that we're... The current vehicle that we're using is a 5500 Ford. We're constantly repairing it. We spoke to our maintenance shop and trying to go to best direction to kind of save money ahead of time because the vehicle we're using is about $110,000 new. We're constantly putting tires, suspension parts because of the wear on the vehicle. So we're trying to extend the life of it. This would be a replacement vehicle as requested by the discussions with the maintenance department. It would come out of fire contingency, which has the funds.
Okay.
Any further questions of Chief Summers regarding this issue? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Wainwright. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item number nine, authorization to assist city of Live Oak with road maintenance on a section of Horn Avenue. Requested that Mr. Harris give us some further feedback on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I pulled that to discuss it so that I could discuss actually a couple of other roads that we're performing some assistance or maintenance on within the city. We have a single agreement with the city of Live Oak for ongoing maintenance of a road, and that's the Itchy Tuckney Road. When we set that agreement up, we are providing that service, and the city in turn takes our leach aid from landfill. We do an even swap on that. Both parties benefit. Since we entered into that agreement, we entered into... Actually, we didn't enter into another agreement, but the board took action to allow the county road department to go out and provide some assistance on two roads on the east side of town, Anna and Eva. The plan was, by the city at the time that it was presented to us, was that they were planning to put millings from Walker when they reconstructed that. They needed assistance spreading the millings on those roads. That hasn't occurred. In preparation for that, though, we went ahead and put lime rock on the roads, graded them, got them shaped in preparation for the millings. We've communicated to the city that that is not a long-term solution by any stretch, that they're going to need to top that or do something. We've been back a few times since then just to grade those roads. My hope is that they are going to be making a decision sometime soon on what to do as a permanent solution, or something more permanent than what they have today. But recently, I received a request to go to Horn Avenue over here on the west side of town. Small stretch, not far from the new Dollar General, next little housing project there. It's an unpaved road. Probably needs something similar to what we did on Anna and Eva. I want you to be aware of where we are with all of the roads, and in my opinion, this would be a one-time approach to try to assist them with that road. It needs lime rock, and it needs to be graded. We could go in there and do that, shape it up, and then, you know, they would need to go ahead and figure out what their permanent solution is. But that's where we are with the assistance we've been providing in the last few years on roads in the city of Live Oak.
I have a question.
Commissioner Wainwright?
Did the city recently receive funding that they're going to pave Itchy Tuckney, the balance of that road? And so that would... We would come out of the maintenance of that particular road?
My understanding was that they had a DOT agreement, not much different than our agreements, go ahead and pave that. But I don't have any idea where they are, what the status of that is.
I'm just thinking as if that does occur, and to continue with the leach aid agreement, I would think that we would need to... They would want us to pick up something else in exchange, is all I'm thinking about.
I don't know where they are on that road, but I have seen a lot of construction work going on on the section between Itchy Tuckney and what essentially wasn't a road in the past, and it's becoming a road.
How long is Horn Avenue?
It's very short. It's just about...
Hundred yards?
About one block.
I'm all right with a one-time fix.
Okay, is that a motion, Commissioner?
I'll make that motion, yes, sir.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to proclamations and presentations. Now here, a presentation of a check in the amount of $50,000 from Florida Recreation Development Assistant Program, also known as FIRDAP, for renovations at Douglas Park. We have a representative from the Parks and Recreation Department, Florida Recreation Development Department, and that would be Craig Liny. I hope I said that right. Liny. And he is the park manager for the Swanee River State Park, and we'll turn our attention over to him and his partner. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Craig Liny. I am the park manager at Swanee River State Park, and this is my assistant, Reanna Elliott. And we are proud to be here tonight to present this important grant.
As Craig said, my name's Reanna Elliott, the park naturalist at Swanee River State Park, and the Department of Environmental Protection is proud to administer this program called the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program. This program is a competitive grant program that funds the acquisitions or the development of lands for public outdoor recreational use. This year, we are very proud that we are able to invest more than $7 million in 137 different recreational projects throughout Florida. Today, we have the honor of presenting to you and to our community a Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program grant check for $50,000 to be used at Douglas Park. These funds will pay for the development of playgrounds, soccer fields, football fields, softball fields, picnicking, and landscaping throughout the park. We want to congratulate the community on this grant award, and we look forward to joining you again as we celebrate the progress on this project.
Thank you. Since you went to all the effort to make the big check, maybe we could take a little bit of a break here, and we'll take a picture with the board in front of the podium, the dais up here, if that's okay with you guys, okay? All right, everybody? Let's do this. We're going to take a break for about two minutes.
You play right guard, and I play right tackle, will you? We'll let Jimmy run the ball.
I tell you what.
Not after sixty operations, you didn't run the ball.
I tell you, ball, football is in the air.
Oh, yeah. I can't wait.
Okay, folks, let's settle back in here. Moving on to item number 12, presentation of an economic impact analysis of Klausner Lumber One LLC. And we have the honor of listening to Dr. Alvin Jackson, our Economic Development Director, and tonight he has some visual aids as well to kind of help us, guide us through this whole explanation. Once we get set up here, we'll turn our attention now to Dr. Jackson. You have to do all your own stuff here, Dr. Jackson.
This evening, what we want to bring before you is just an economic impact update on the Klausner Lumber Number One. They've been in existence, they started operations in January of 2015, and we feel that at this point, we actually have track record and some numbers that we would like to share with you and really show you and the community how this project is, has been, and will continue to be a major economic impact here in Swanee County. This report actually will spread out that economic impact over 10 years. So, let's talk about performance to date. And there are some extra full reports out on the counter and the PowerPoint, and if you don't want it in hard copy, please feel free to give me a call, and we can send it to you digitally. Performance to date, the capital investment has been 112.3 million, total employment, 323 new jobs, the average wage, 32,600. The total payroll is $2.2 million. Just some facts, the sawmill, the square footage is 213,120 square feet, the log yard building is about 29,000 square feet, the paved area is 961,510 square feet. The total taxes paid, paid to date is $900,336. So those are the taxes that have been paid to date. Now, when we talk about Klausner Lumber One, you know, there has been investments into that site, and it's really the... It's the catalyst site. And so today, we have made those investments. It's not limited to Klausner. And I just really want the commissioners and the public to understand is that that site is larger than just Klausner. And so there will be additional benefits to the catalyst site as new companies come into the site. But just looking at the numbers, the county has invested 6.9 million in dollars for infrastructure, site development, et cetera. Now, we want to make a correction here. The grant dollars were about 12 million versus 8.4 million. So the total investment between the county and the state is $19.9 million. Also, if you remember last year, we gave them a performance-based grant for performing, and at this time of the year, they submitted their report, and once again, they've invested 112.3 million. The project is expected to be about a $128 million project. They've hired the 323. The grant is 3.9 million, and it's going to be spread over seven years and paid in those increments of $563,142 annually. This year's payout will be $489,934, which is 87% of the performance for this year. And so that's how the performance grant works. So every year, they have to send us a report, and basically, we will evaluate that report and see if they are actually meeting the goals and the requirements. So just let's take a quick look. Total incentive is 3.9. That's about $11,263 per employee that we... Per job that we're investing. The rate of return will be about 21.7%. It will take them about 4.4 years to actually... For the county to recoup those incentive dollars. And I don't have a pointer, but on this slide, you will see that the straight line is the 3.9 million. The... This is the 70-meter connect, and actually, this is the 250 net benefit over 10 years. So over the next 10 years, they have created 350 jobs, and it could be more. The indirect induced jobs that will be created is about 207 jobs. Now, direct... Indirect jobs are those jobs where they directly provide services, goods to the company, and companies will have to hire individuals, persons, to actually do that. And induced jobs are those jobs that are created, like in restaurants, medical center, et cetera. But those 350 jobs will actually create a total of 557 jobs. Now, this piece is really important. You know, many times we say, how many jobs have they created? Well, you know, the numbers, you can have 350 jobs, and folks are making $10 an hour, but you can have 350 jobs, and basically, you get $124 million in payroll. Indirect induced, 69 million. In over 10 years, the total payroll will be $193 million in payroll. Taxable sales and purchases, direct, 77 million. Indirect induced, 10 million. A total, 88 million, one. And so what we're looking at is these dollars are actually impacting Swanee County. And once again, you can see the benefits. These are the benefits, and the first years, the expenditures are pretty high. The net benefit over 10 years is double that. Here's the cost. So this is the adjustment. So, this project touches many areas, and for those that get a copy of the plan on the back of it, these are all the companies that benefit from... So, we're talking about general medical, limited services restaurants, corporate subsidiaries, offices, full-service restaurants, nursing care facilities, janitorial services, wood preservation. These are all the indirect and induced industries that benefit from Klausner here in Swanee So, the... During construction, basically, when we talk about economic development, we want to talk about the temporary jobs and the dollars that are being spent during construction. That impacts Swanee County also at a tune of about 36 million. And basically, what we do is kind of 50/50 material and labor during construction period. So, the fiscal impact overview, it will generate additional benefits and costs to the local taxing district. The source of overall, the county will receive approximately about $8.5 million over 10 years. Swanee... The Swanee County Public Schools will receive about $5.2 million, and special districts about $240,000. And that just gives you a chart of how that spreads in each taxing district. So, in summary, the project operation will support employment. It has supported employment and other economic impacts in this community. Once again, want to reiterate, the 350 workers directly employed by the project will earn approximately $36,000. And that's with benefits. The direct activity will support an additional 207 jobs, indirect and induced in the community, earning $31,000 annually. The total additional payroll, workers' earnings associated with the project, is estimated to be about $193.5 million, and the taxable sales and purchases is projected to be at about $88.2 million. And so, when we're talking about economic development, and we see that the county and the state, at the end of the day, would have invested about $20 million, but the return is 350 plus 207 jobs, 193.5 million in payroll, and 88.2 in taxable sales and purchases. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
How much of that is going to the school board?
You mean the taxes?
Taxes.
For... This year, $410,000. And each year, that will increase as the... As the value of the site increases.
Question.
Yes.
On page three, 2015 total taxes paid. I know that there was still some construction going on, and so I don't know where the property appraisers valuation lies in that total capital investment. Is that 936,000? Does that include what was paid to the school and water management as well?
Correct. Yes. 410,000 of that was school, and then the remainder went to the special district.
Any further questions for Dr. Jackson?
I got one question.
Commissioner Gamble?
There's been a little bit of controversy over the job numbers. Can you give us an explanation on how you went about verifying them?
Yeah, 941. Basically, each company has to file a 941 with the federal government, and one of their reporting requirements is that they have to provide me a 941, that they submit it to the federal government. So basically, the numbers, 323 is real, and the payroll is real.
Really?
That's all I have.
I just have a comment.
Commissioner Sessions?
So if that 941 give you... It's a confirmation of total employment, how much is paid out, and all that stuff?
Correct.
Is that by data, or...
No, that's the report that they have to submit to the federal government on a quarterly basis.
Commissioner Sessions?
I just want to comment that it looks like with what we've got in it, with grants and everything else, it's about 20 million, and it's going to be about a $281 million return. That, you know, remember, you had a little bit of rough times, but that's still a pretty good return for $20 million.
I agree.
Over 10 years.
Anything else by the board? Thank you, Dr. Jackson, very much for that wonderful professional presentation. All right. Moving right along this evening to Commissioner items, are there any... Is there any commissioner that would like to add something to the agenda this evening or open up something for discussion at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to open something up for just discussion or maybe clarification.
Understood. Go ahead, Commissioner Gamble.
Back some time back, we changed the policy on sick leave, and either I misunderstood the policy, or it's been interpreted wrong, and I just want to get some clarification on the board... From the board as far as when we have employees go out on workman's comp.
Understood.
I'm sure most of y'all by now are aware that we have an employee out on workman's comp that has run out of sick leave because when they were hurt on the job, they haven't been building it while out on workman's comp. Maybe from lack of going through it when we passed it, which if it is, and I'm at fault for that, I didn't realize at the time that it would apply to workman's comp. I thought it was strictly going to be unscheduled sick leave.
Understood.
So, I don't know if anybody else has any comments on it or can straighten me out on it, if you don't mind.
Well, I'll take a stab at it. I think that during the course of the adoption of that policy, it was meant to affect, I think, vacation and sick leave, but in an effort to fix another problem, it created another problem of workman's comp. So I think it just affected that. So I believe that's what occurred at that point in time. Sometimes these discussions come up, and we find things out after the fact, but, you know, with regard to my comments on it, I'll try to give some of my research that I've done on the situation after I was made aware of it. You know, we have to decide what we want to do, what the policies are in any situation, whether it be workman's comp or annual leave or sick leave. You know, in those... That conversation is called benefits. So we, as a commission, offer a very competitive benefits package to our employees, and so when we look at how we institute those policies, we have to say to ourselves, are we doing what's in the best interest? are we doing what's in the best interest of the taxpayer? And are we taking into account the employees' needs and their personal responsibility in regards to accrual of sick, of sick leave? And so, we can do several things here this evening in regards to that, or we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting, give the other, other commissioners an opportunity to do any research on it if they're not aware of any workman's comp situation. So, if anybody's prepared to talk to it, to talk about it tonight, we can, or we can bring it back on the agenda the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Fleming?
I'm not a pa, prepared to talk on this subject tonight. What I would do, I would like to, to do further study on it, and, and, you know, like, get legal opinion. I don't desire to make a hasty decision at this time.
Understood. Anybody else? Commissioner Sessions?
I'd like to spend some time, not just making a decision up here, but maybe have a, have a workshop on it, to really get into the details of it, to really discuss it among us.
Okay.
Among the board.
Understood. Anybody else have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem with it. I just want the board to really take a look at it. I feel like we, what we did was a policy to stop abuse of sick leave, but I don't believe an individual that gets hurt working for us is qualifying as an abuse of sick leave. And I don't think at the point where they going out on leave, especially when they're going to doctor's appointments, to our workman's comp doctors, that they're not being compensated for it. I would, if a workshop's what the board wishes, or further discussion, I definitely would be interested in it.
Okay. All right. Sounds like the general consensus is we can discuss this at a, at a future date, either a future meeting or a future workshop. You okay with that, Commissioner?
Yeah. I'd like it on the next meeting if we can.
All right. Next meeting agenda. All right. Moving back to, Commissioner, is there anything anybody else would like to add? I just have one thing. In light of the fact, I don't know if, if you guys got your budget books in a timely manner this time around, but I had planned on spending some time this weekend going over my budget book to be prepared for the budget workshops, which are Wednesday and Thursday. And I dropped it off on Friday, and there was extensive remodel of the book. I waited around for a considerable amount of time, then I was made aware that it would be, it would be ready on Monday. So, I, Monday, I worked, Tuesday, I spent time preparing for this meeting, and now we're going into budget workshops with a considerable amount of change into those budget books. And so, I'm saying to the board that I feel like we need to reschedule those workshops to not a distant date, but a different time, so that we can all have maybe a weekend to go, to sit down and go over other things, because you guys all got other things going on, just like I do. And those proposed dates that I would suggest would be meeting before the next meeting in the morning, proceeding until, say, four o'clock, if it takes that long, take a break, then come back into our regular meeting that evening, and then reconvene for the balance of the workshop on Wednesday morning, and going through there, if that's okay with everybody. That would be the next meeting, the next, the date of the next regularly scheduled board meeting, meeting that morning, and then all the next day. Anybody have a problem with that?
I don't.
No.
Commissioner Wainwright?
The sixteenth and the seventeenth, then.
Right.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman. I'm likewise, I'm, if, if we go through with it over the next two days, I think we'd better be prepared to have an extensive tentative budget hearing in September, because I don't, chances are, I'm just not prepared.
Right.
For tomorrow, or, or the next day. But if we want to, if we need to go in and have it in the next two days, we can go through it, and then, just like I say, potentially be prepared at the first tentative budget hearing to have an extensive discussion then, but I, honestly, I'd rather move it to the sixteenth and seventeenth.
It's going to be a D week, no, the sixteenth, the seventeenth.
I can, I can excuse myself for that a little bit. That's, that's an organizational meeting, is it not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, tomorrow's primary, the constitutional officer and department head presenting their budgets to the board. I wouldn't have a problem sitting through tomorrow, and, and then maybe adding an additional day to our budget workshop on the sixteenth.
I, I would just rather just reschedule it and do it all. It's fresh in your mind, you can go through, you can make telephone calls, Commissioner, to those, to those outside agencies and things, if you have questions. It just makes better sense to reschedule, I think, in my mind.
I'm fine with that.
All right. So, the, the budget workshops for tomorrow and Thursday are hereby canceled. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, we've already checked on the, the use of this building.
I understand, or maybe some logistics.
We would need to go to the city hall for the workshops.
Understood.
Because the seventeenth, supervising elections, we set up.
Understood. Okay.
So, it's not a problem, and we can, we've got time to readvertise.
All right. So, the venue is changed to the City of Live Oak's main building there, on U.S. Highway Ninety. Okay?
Same time.
Same times, nine AM, both days. All right. Moving right along to staff report, or county attorney items. Mr. Privat, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, not this evening.
Okay. Moving on to staff reports, item number thirteen, and we're going to listen to Catherine Allen, Betty Lawrence, Greg Scott, and James Summers. First up is Catherine Allen, Extension Office Director. Do you have our attention, Mrs. Allen?
Thank you. Just wanted to give you a quick update. We've had some very exciting news. Our 4-H competition that we had at the university, we had a lot of winners from Swanee County. And actually, the speechwriter from UF for our Vice President Payne, actually looked at one of the success stories that we had with one of our youth last year, and talked about how these experiences can really lead to amazing opportunities for the future. One of the youth that we're talking about is going to an Ivy League university, and one of the things in all of her college applications talked about her experiences in 4-H, and she was having a hard time deciding between Harvard and Yale. So, really good problem to have, but very exciting there. Also, our very own Christian Rodriguez is a state delegate. He is the, the new treasurer for the state 4-H council. So, again, this is where they get a lot more experience. He'll be traveling to other counties throughout Florida, and helping to run that, that office. This Friday, August fifth, is the annual 4-H banquet. This is where the award presentations are given. I believe all of you have had an invitation, and we encourage you to come and share in the good news. There's a lot of good things that are happening. These kids have worked hard, and it's exciting to see those things. It starts at six PM. They'll be in the Coliseum. I just got back from the bovine buzzer camp. I know it sounds funny, but this is a statewide camp that we put on here in Swanee County. So, we had folks as far as coming from Okeechobee that came all the way this morning to attend this week, well, it's about three days now. You know, today's Tuesday, four-day camp. And just as an example, this year, we're going through lactation, so it's in-depth to prepare the kids for dairy quiz bowls, where they can go on to, to national competitions. In this case, my, my role was teaching about tasting, and believe it or not, milk tasting is a career that someone can, can get into, and there's a reason why milk tasting is very important, because milk can absorb flavor, it can, it can also absorb odors. And so, with the people doing milk tasting, one of the things may be that a farmer may need to do better weed management in the pasture, because of what it's eating. It may be that they need to change when they feed the cow, because that can directly influence the flavor found in milk. It could also be that, it could be a detection for microbial growth. So, it could be an occurrence of mastitis, where we want, don't want, we want to pull that cow out, so that that milk doesn't get pooled with the other milk. It could be ketosis. It could be that somebody didn't manage the temperatures properly. And so, here, from a very simple talk about tasting and how this sensory activity works, it leads into a much bigger discussion. So, just a, a quick note about that. We're starting our next class of Master Gardener volunteers. This is an extensive class. Orientation is tomorrow, and then the classes start August tenth, and they run until November sixteenth. So, as you can tell, that is a, a very intensive class. They are required to pass a final exam, and then the first year, they're required to give seventy-five hours back to the community. So, we have an awesome, awesome cadre of volunteers, and you really should be proud of the folks, because they do a lot of things, including the start-back-up of the seed library at the, at the Live Oak Library. So, that goes for one to three every Wednesday, and usually, there's a gardening talk, as well as that lending opportunity, so that people can pick up seeds there. We're starting a free diabetes class Thursday, October, August eleventh, and that's three consecutive Thursdays. We're working with the Health Department on that one, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. So, one of the things, this isn't as in-depth as some of our other diabetes classes, but it does not include the consultation with the registered dietitian, which, you know, is still a reduced cost, but sometimes that's a challenge for folks. So, this is a free class. And we're going to be doing a dining with diabetes class, because we know that that has been a real issue for folks that have diabetes, and there's not a lot of information out there. So, how do they go out to eat and still be able to manage this, this disease? We were able to get some support from the Swanee River Economic Council for financial literacy classes that we're doing, so we're partnering with Columbia County Extension for Smart Money Moves, and they've provided, because of Swanee River Economic Council, they've been able to provide us with some really nice tools that people can use to start conversations with their families, to manage their money, budget, et cetera. Those are free classes. The one in Swanee County will be on August fifteenth at the Extension Office, and in Columbia on November ninth. Both of those are three-hour classes, and these are basic classes. And these are for folks, you know, I was, my parents taught me a lot, and I'm very thankful for that, but one of the things that they said is, you don't talk about money. Well, if people don't have a safe place to talk about money, they can have financial problems in, in the fut, in their future. And so, this is a really important, safe place, that they can get research-based information. We're not selling anything. This is so that they can understand the basics. We'll be, because of the comments that we've gotten from the classes that we've done so far, we'll be doing some advanced how-to-invest kind of, kinds of classes. And then we also have ship classes coming up. So, the bovine camp is our last summer day camp for kids, and, because school starts up here shortly, so.
Thank you for that presentation. Is, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Allen?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll welcome up our Director of Libraries, Ms. Betty Lawrence.
Good evening, Commissioners and community. We're just ending our summer reading program. We have an annual summer reading program, so I'd like to just give you a little bit of information on that. And this, the stats that I have are just for Swanee County this time. We started our first summer reading program for youth with about two-hundred-and-forty-three children, but the last count I have is that we had in attendance, between the two branches, six-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-five children. And so, I'm, I'm always impressed and glad about the kind of participation that we have for my youth during the summer. And I also want to give a, a shout-out, if you will, or mention our teenagers, our youth that volunteer doing the summer reading program. We, so many times, we talk about, you know, the problems that we have with youth, but I want to testify that we have a lot of youth in our communities that are very responsible. They start, and they, most of them stay with us for the complete six to eight weeks of the summer reading program, and this year, they logged in some two-thousand-five-hundred hours, and that was specifically to help with our summer reading programs at Branford and at Live Oak this year. We also had not as much participation as I'd like with the adult summer reading program, but it's mounting up. Keep in mind that the number indicates the adults that attended the programs, not necessarily everybody that was reading, because we have high numbers for that. But we did have five-hundred-and-twenty-one adults that participated in our summer reading programs at Branford and Live Oak, so we just combined those numbers. The last adult program that we had, I'd like to just express my appreciation to the Army and the Friends of the Library. We had a five-K run that was stationed at the library, and it, it worked really well. We had a, and this year, the theme was around fitness, and so we had a, what we call a healthy breakfast after the run, which went over very well, and it was healthy. But got a lot of comments on that, and I had someone that signed up. I guess they were just maybe vacationing, but South Dakota and Chicago, Ohio, that kind of impressed me a little bit, that they would even participate. But we had fun with that. I didn't run, but I did walk. We also, with the children's programs, each of you have one of these, but there are some out front, for those of you who'd like to pick up one, it gives you a sample of the kind of programs that the kids participated in this summer. I got to see the miniature horses, and a hell of snake, which is unusual for me, because I was always taught, growing up in Swanee County, especially if you see a rattlesnake, you do what you could to get rid of it. This was a different experience for me, and the kids really loved it. Let's see. Also, there are some flyers out front that give you an idea of what kind of programs we'll be having during the month of August. And one program I'd like to mention to you, there are not enough flyers for the number of people in the building, but let me encourage you to share this information with anyone else that you'd like to. If you remember, I guess maybe a couple of meetings or so ago, we had a representative from the Chief Financial Offices, Office in Tallahassee, and he talked a little bit about the treasure hunt. So, I want to thank Commissioner Bashaw for helping to arrange to have a program at the library, so that people that are interested in having help doing this search, you can come out on August fifteenth at four-thirty. The gentleman will be there, and we will all be there with computers, will help you do the search there in the library online. You never know. So, if you can, just come out and be with us. Also, want to tell you that the Darnin Park Library is coming along fine. You have the opportunity to, or maybe you already have, stop by and see it, and there are so many pictures online, Facebook and everything else, that you can probably get a good idea of what the, the update is, just by looking at some of those. And tonight, I'm prepared to do library cards, so if anybody's in here, you don't have a library card, or you need to update your library card, I have my iPhone, and I have applications. We can do it during the break, or after, after the meeting. So, you have any questions for me?
I don't have a question, but I was looking at these numbers. I know you gave out the numbers, but the children, if I'm looking at this number, it's fifty-one, forty-three, teens, nine-ninety-two, total sixty-one, that's six-thousand-one-thirty-five?
Yes.
A lot of people.
And those are good numbers, because we count.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawrence.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions with the board, Mrs. Lawrence? Thank you for your report. Very well done. All right. Next, we'll welcome up our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Greg. All right, next, we'll welcome up our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Greg Scott.
Good evening, gentlemen and community. Appreciate the opportunity to be here as always. Just giving an update on the airport first. We've got the stormwater match plan done and it's out of the way. We're in the process of getting together the information on the AWAS and the tug system for the grant we got for that. AWAS will be much excited for our tenants out there. It's been long needed. The, got the bid opening for the maintenance building on August 9th. And we had a little celebration for Dana Brendel. He was retired and on his merry way, he stopped by the office twice and wants to come back and volunteer. And so, I'm not sure his wife's working him too hard at home or what, but anyway, different story. We also, in the process of upgrading the security system, the keypads, both at the main gate and also at Fire Rescue, issuing new cards to the tenants, one per hangar. Some, one for each vehicle, but it's one per hangar that we can track them now, know who's coming in when. And that way, when we have an issue, we can track it down to who was there. So, a lot better security than we've had in the past. On athletics, we've wrapped up baseball and softball season, had 419 kids involved with baseball, softball program for the year. We also had four different state tournaments that we offered. Had teams from the North Florida area here. Economic impact was probably about 200, I'm sorry, about $300,000 to the area for that. Rusty and his group got to benefit a lot from the people that stayed in Lake City, but we don't mind sharing, Rusty's gone. But anyway, that was real good for the community and just the economics alone helps put that money back into the kiddies. We also got football registration going on now. We've got the flyers out front, passed out to y'all also, so you've got the information for football and cheerleading. We had six, the first softball league is wrapped up, wrapping up this week. So, and last year for football, we had 202 kids involved with that, so hopefully it'll be a little bit more this year. There's a big correlation between the success and the excitement at the high school level and what our numbers are. So their numbers are getting to build at the high school level, so we hope that ours will do also. On park side and some other things, the Springs have been very busy this year. We've got real good cooperation from the Sheriff's Office on patrols, helping to maintain activity at those locations. At the arena, at the rodeo arena, we've got new speakers installed, helped, Mark's guys helped us with that, or probably did most of that. But next, we'll have, work on the irrigation for that. We've got some issues with that, we'll be working on next. The pool, had every swim lesson full for the whole season. And the day camp wrapped up, is wrapping up next week, I'm sorry, this week will wrap up day camp. I've been using Swanee Intermediate School for that program, real good partnership with the school for the programs. And we averaged over 30 kids a day in that program, but I keep getting parents stopping me and thanking me for what we're doing. I can't take credits to the staff that does that, but a lot of trips and things, but the kids are really enjoying it, having a blast doing that. I always want to, with day camp, I want the kids to get excited when they, before they get there, get excited about going, so mama don't have to worry about getting them up and forcing them to get dressed like they do their other part of the year. And then get them there, have a blast all day long, go home exhausted, eat supper and crash. That way mama's real happy on both ends of the day, and that's the important thing. The, that's pretty well it. One thing I just wanted to mention, if you see our guys, or especially our park staff out and about, even our guards and such, it's hot out there. I don't know if you've noticed this year, but generally, our guys don't have AC. They're in the elements and stuff. And every once in a while, whenever I see our guys out there sweating and getting with it, I really appreciate what they do. And if I pass a dump truck, it's guys' air on, I'm like, I'm jealous. But, or if I'm sitting in the other truck, they're probably jealous too. But it's, you know, just remember those guys, you know, if you run into them sometime, they're getting with it. And I really appreciate what they do. They make, they make me look better than I can by myself. So, any questions you've got for me?
Any questions of Mr. Scott by the board?
No, I just got a comment. Just to thank you, we had a boat ramp breaking half out of Charles Springs a couple weeks ago. Made a quick phone call to Mr. Scott that afternoon, met two of his guys down there with about 10 bags of cement, and we put a Band-Aid on it. And then, we got, made a phone call to, or Greg worked it out with Public Works to get us a load of rock down there within a couple more days. So, two departments working good together and they were real speedy with it. I just appreciate it.
Appreciate that. I'd like to just add to, just got a notification, we wrote three grants, Daryl may not even know this yet, but we wrote three grants for boat ramp improvements with Voter Improvement Fund from Game of Fish. We were successful with the Peacock Lake Boat Ramp Grant, not Charles, and I haven't heard, I'm sorry, not Peacock, but I haven't heard about Charles yet. So hoping Charles will be on the list because...
Maybe so, that'd be in the one that broke in half.
Exactly, exactly.
Anybody else? I got one thing. Mr. Scott, I just want to, and this, this happens with all the department heads, is the coordination of efforts between the other bodies of government to make things like this happen. And I'll talk to, speak to the effect that we get reports of the people that you hire for these day camps and for concessions and things like that, that are usually, I guess, would be high school students or maybe just recent graduates who are spending their summer contributing to their community, although they are getting some pay for it, but it's still kind of a labor of love. But the school board letting us use that facility is good. We have, we have a school board member here this evening that needs to be recognized, Mrs. Julie Almer with District 3. And so we'd just like to ask that you send our warm love and greetings and thanks back to the Swanee County School Board this evening by the Board of County Commissioners, if you'd do that for us. Thank you.
On the same note, we do, for the tournaments, we use the Swanee Middle School Field and also Swanee High School Field for those tournaments. And, you know, our guys just went and helped, you know, got fields ready and stuff and worked them during the tournament, but they're more than eager to have us there. And it's, I hear the heartaches throughout the state from our counterparts, and we don't have that here. Everybody pitches in. It's nice to be able to call school, Public Works, county maintenance, anybody, and we, you know, we're in this thing together. So, appreciate that.
The other, the other point I wanted to make is along those same lines is, and I hate to put you on the spot, but I know you can do it, is can you explain to us how you arrive at the numbers with the ripple effect with the tournaments in relation to the amount of economic impact to the community from those tournaments? Maybe speak to the volume of people that are coming in, I like that. And then also, speak to what these folks are saying when they come into our community, which reflects good on, on the school board as the maintenance of their fields, but also your fields.
Certainly. In the, in the four tournaments we have, had about 27 teams involved in those tournaments. Some were very small tournaments, but, but still, that was important to them. If you calculate about 15 members per team and somebody brings one and a half, two people with them, so you add those numbers and they spend $50 a day, which they usually spend more than that if you ever travel, spend more than that generally. And then, number of days that they're here, then calculate times 1.9 is percent rollover, which is a very conservative number, that's how we come up with those, those numbers. It, you know, it really, you know, the thing that I keep hearing from people when they, when I walk through the tournaments, wow. You know, when I saw on the map where Livock was, we didn't know we was going to get here and it'd be like it is, and y'all feel so much better, so much better than ours. Had...
When McCannie left you?
We had one of the guys stop and talk to me about how much our fields are different than neighboring county, that they may have more, but ours are better. And when you put the quality, we started building the complex years ago, we went to Savannah and looked at their facility and used their model as our model. And we looked at Tallahassee and some other places, but Savannah was, was the premier place at the time. The thing that Mr. Pearson taught us there was, the more you put into it, the more you get out of it. And the thing that our guys put a lot of effort into it and the resources we get from the city and the county helps us do that. But because of that, we get, you know, 400 games a year on those fields. We get, if you don't invest in them with fertilization and irrigation and such, you're going to get them beat to death and not be able to use them. You know, sometimes the high school football field gets beat on some, but their field doesn't hold up as well as ours field, our field does. So, but it's labor love for the guys, but it's really an investment that the community makes to get the community, the investment back by doing the tournaments also.
So, how many games are you hosting a year there that would create this economic impact?
Oh, off the top of my head, I'm guessing, I'd have to run some numbers on those tournaments. You do doubleheader, I mean, you do double elimination and such, and, but even our, even our local leagues, we get teams from Jasper coming down to play, we get Branford coming up and play, we get some other teams coming in also. So it's hard to calculate, you know, all the residual money we're getting without even an addition to the tournaments.
Okay. Well, maybe you could have that information in budget workshops. But yeah, so you would say you're at capacity then?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, our, there's some dead time, you know, when it gets to be, you know, maybe July and August, but you don't have as many tournaments then, after you get past the, the traditional Bay Bruth and Little Leagues and that kind of thing, the playoff format. Tournament ball is big, and there's a lot of revenue to be generated there. And, you know, in the budget workshops, I'll be asking to put some money away in a fund. So when we get some grants flowing again, we can start writing a, we add some of the local money to that, not necessarily for matches, but funding things we can't afford to fund through the grant, lights and bathrooms and that kind of thing, so.
Understood. All right. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll now welcome up our Public Safety Director, Chief James Summers.
Commissioners Chairman, like Greg was saying, I hope everybody that has to work outside is hydrated. That's something we, we try to preach with our staff, be in our conditions and what we have to do. And we've kind of suspended our training during these hot months and try to enforce that they, they hydrate. So, try to encourage, use the restroom every 15 minutes to be properly hydrated, so. As far as Fire Rescue, 618 calls on average per month. We're continuing with our CPR classes. And a little funny story, we were going through Santa Fe Community College, we've put their CPR program out of business, doing CPR classes within Swanee County. They were trying to figure out what we were doing up here with our, our awareness program and our CPR program with the citizens. So, we've had to change venues and are now with UF Health out of Gainesville. And they're ecstatic to have us, you know, try to, try to expand their role up in north central Florida. Two-thirds of our employees in the month of August will be participating with an advanced airway course through UF Health out of Jacksonville. They will be meeting with top physicians in pre and post-care related to EMS. So we're, we're excited about that, to try to get that services over here to make sure that we're providing the best care to our citizens. Another thing we're proud of is our door-to-balloon times. So that's for cardiac and stroke are at 17 minutes on average. And that's something to be proud of. Average counties around us are about 45 minutes, door-to-balloon time. So, we, we take pride in that 17 minutes. That means as soon as you hit the doors, that's when door-to-balloon, you hit the front door of the hospital, you're on the table having that surgery performed on you. So, our, our guys are recognizing these symptoms, 98% accuracy. They're bypassing the ER, they go straight to the physician's table, the team's sitting there waiting on them, and they perform the procedures. So that's something I'm proud of, to have that service here with the type of service we have that we can bring back to our community. Also, the other day, we were able to train with Clausner. They had their downtime on one of their days. That's something we've kind of, kind of waiting for, to work with the water system out at Clausner and all the machinery and, and trying to get familiar with that site. We've done major, multiple walkthroughs, but as far as our staff, as far as the response, for response times, actually flowing water within the facility, shutting down all their equipment, making sure all their safety procedures work, you know, function properly. So, that was a great hit. We learned a lot from them, they learned a lot from us as far as what's expected. So, we're proud to have them here and work with them, and we have a good working relationship with, with Clausner out there, so. Does the Commissioner have any questions or?
Any questions of Chief Summers by the board? Nope. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I called for questions already.
I could hear something up while Jamie's still up here. Commissioners Sessions had asked about the truck a moment ago. We talked about the brush truck, the 550 that these men are running around, this expensive truck and wearing it out. The word that was used was a replacement for that. That truck isn't really being replaced by the new one.
No.
We're keeping...
Right, you're trying to keep the miles off of it.
Yeah, that's right.
Once you, once you explain that like that, I understood that side of it.
Because you said replacement truck, we're actually just...
It costs a lot to run a 5,500 around versus a 2,500.
The old one and have the new one as well.
Thank you, Chief. While you're up, do you have, moving on to item number 14, do you have anything to tell us regarding the State's Attorney's Office?
I was going to give you a staff report.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
It wasn't on, no, 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 no. It's not on the agenda, we can't do it.
But that's okay. I'll have another option in a minute.
Go ahead. Staff report from...
I do have, I do have some items.
Mr. Randy Harris.
For the State Attorney's Office.
Go ahead, Al.
Several. I spoke to the board, I don't know, several months ago and got authorization to bid a number of things that we might have to bid related to the site and different things. I have a more specific and narrowly tailored list tonight. It's in your agenda packet that I wanted to get board authorization on because there are a number of site issues and Mizell building issues that I want to bid, and I wanted the board to know about it. So they're on your list tonight. I'll run through them real quick. Seven items here. One of these is going to be a sole source because it's a power company. That's a, we need a self-supporting concrete pole on the northeast corner of that building because we have to take guy wires out that are holding that old pole down in order to run a stormwater drain right through that specific location. We need to...
Could you share the value of that particular project? Is it a change from what you told me?
The, the estimate, if we had time, I'd ask you to speculate on what that price might be, but I'll, I'll just go ahead and share the news with you. The estimate on that is going to be in the neighborhood of $30,000 to fix that pole.
A pole.
A concrete pole. A pole out, a wooden pole and replace it with a concrete pole. Very expensive. In any event...
Give it, give it.
Does that help you?
Paid my day.
S H, S M.
It helps us to know that we can bid the rest of these items. We're going to need to bid out a new sewer main and a manhole installation. We need to remove, some things that we need to do at the Mizell property, we need to remove the old scales and then that piece of the building that's protruding out on the south side of the building will have to be cut back to accommodate part of the new parking lot. That'll need to be bid. The west side of that building, that wall needs to be plumbed and some new siding put on it just to clean it up. And on that side of the building is where we will also have these stormwater retention pond. We'll need to bid that out as well, along with the stormwater collection system, the inlets and pipe system. That'll take care of some other water issues around this property. New gutters for the Mizell building. And then we'll need to bid underground power, electric from that new pole over to the new State Attorney's Office. And I'd like to go ahead and bid the same for this building so that we can get rid of these old poles that are out here that'll be between the new parking lot and this one. And we do have a plan in those designs to connect the two parking lots with a sidewalk for overflow parking for this facility when we have larger crowds. So, those are the items that I'd like to get authorization to go ahead and bid. With the exception of that pole, we're just going to have to pay them to replace, Florida Power to replace that pole.
Kind of a sole source.
It is a sole source.
Does anybody have any questions regarding items one through seven here?
Mr. Chairman, if we could, when we go to address the issues, can we pull six separately so that it'll be a separate item because it is a sole source item?
Okay. So we can make a, a motion for items one through five and seven all at once, or we can discuss it some more, whatever you guys want to do. And then we'll consider item number six individually.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll offer a motion one through five and seven to approve them, go out and bid.
Motion made by Commissioner Gamble. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. And just for clarification, in the backup, I'll read these out so that people can understand what we're saying. Number one, installation of new sewer main and manhole authorization to bid, removal of scales and portion of roof and south wall of Mizel building authorization to bid, plum west rear wall of Mizel building install new siding authorization to bid, stormwater collection system, inlets and pipe system authorization to bid, new gutters, Mizel building authorization to bid, and number seven, underground electric services, State's Attorney's Office and Judicial Annex authorization to bid. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number six, installation of new self-supporting concrete pole at northeast corner of State Attorney Building, Florida Power sole source authorization to execute contract. What is wishes the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Flint, Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, or any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, thanks gentlemen. Moving back up here to item number 15, additional agenda items, I have none here this evening. Or is there anything else any Commissioner would like to add at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to public concerns and comments. I have no public comments and concerns cards this evening, unless somebody would like to address the board, we'll move on past that. Mrs. Almer, please come forward. We know who you are, but state your name and address for the record.
I'm Julie Almer, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Swanee County School Board. Tonight was a little bit of a full circle moment for me because when Project Christmas, the mysterious catalyst project was out there, I was chairman of the school board and I stood before the county commission and I asked for your support on the project because at the time our school district was in declining enrollment, which was directly tied to the poor economic condition of Swanee County. And I knew, and the district knew, that the immediate benefit of the tax revenue coming into the school district would be something we desperately needed. So the Clausner project actually has been wonderful for our school district. That half a million dollars came at a time where the state reduced our ability to levy a full two mils for facilities, we're down to a mil and a half. That money has helped fill the gaps of the recession. It's also directly tied to us bringing on a plumbing and electrical program at River Oak Technical College. The job demands from Clausner actually is what justified us bringing that program on. So I just wanted to say thank you because it really has been a blessing to this community. Our school district is working closely to try to fill those jobs and provide training opportunities for the company as needed. We are very serious about our role in economic development in our, this community and will continue to do whatever we can. And I also wanted to say thank you for supporting the Firdapp Grant at the Douglas Park. When the school district deeded the Douglas property to the county, we knew how important Douglas High School's memory was to this community. And what you all are doing to maintain the gym and that park is so meaningful. So thank you.
Thank you. Very welcome.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Your passion for, for our community is great, we appreciate your comments this evening. Anyone else? Seeing none, go ahead. Item number 17, administrators' comments and information, did you, do you have anything further, Mr. County Administrator?
Actually, I do. Give us an overview on what Public Works is doing. I usually reserve my time for something in the future, this might be one of those future events, I won't give this very long, but we have a great deal going on out there. We've had a couple of reconstruction meetings on roads in the last two weeks, I guess. The one today was on 180th and the bridge, DOT is helping with. The bridge contractor should be mobilized out there in about three weeks and have those initial repairs. Now these are temp, actually temporary repairs. People will be able to use the bridge once the road is finished and that these repairs occur, but DOT will come back then and as soon as they can put sufficient funding together to tear that old bridge completely out and replace it with a new one. So that's encouraging to know that that's occurring. We've all heard from people that live in that area that are tired of having to drive around and I can appreciate their frustration. In any event, I wanted to share too, when, actually when Greg was up here, but other department heads do the same thing. When you look at your budget book this year, and I too was thrilled to know that we're gonna postpone that a little bit, there've been so many changes in that book that I haven't even had time now since Friday to go back and look at the most recent changes. But in there, what you're gonna find with Parks and Recreation is a large number of grants, a lot of revenue in there, a lot, a lot of revenue associated with the Road Department and with Parks and Recreation that's funding that has been applied for with state agencies for improvements in this county. If you look at your ad valorem taxes over the last several years, you haven't generated more from year to year, yet your budget is growing, but it's a reflection of grants that we have applied for to try to make improvements and improve services in this county that we simply cannot afford to pay for. That's just the reality. I don't know how many of you have received this report from Florida Tax Watch, but there's some interesting information in here that I want to share with you very quickly. The first page is per capita total property tax levies. This is where we stand in comparison to other counties in the state. Number one being the highest per capita tax rate, number 67 being the lowest in this case, we stand at number 54. We were among the lowest per capita taxes levied in the state of Florida. Very, very low. Per county, excuse me, per capita county government property tax levies, we stand at number 51. Again, number one being the highest and number 67 being the lowest. So your county government property taxes are still amongst the lowest in the state This is a really interesting one. In the last eight years, growth in total property taxes by county, Swanee County, like a few others, has actually declined minus 4.4%. Minus 4.4% property tax levies in the last eight years in Swanee County. There are many others here I could share with you, but anyway, I just wanted to point these facts out to you because your departments do a whole lot with very little and really it's a lot of effort that goes into reaching out, trying to bring money in here from other sources that are available. You know that your big source of revenue that makes the largest difference in this county probably is gas tax revenues that not only we're generating as local option gas taxes, but those that DOT or the state is generating statewide. We're in a tourism state, there's a huge benefit in all these tourists coming to this state and then the state itself taking on the responsibility of ensuring that the various counties are able to share in those revenues that are generated. And that's about all I really wanted to share with you this evening.
No, no Public Works update? Anything further?
We're still running trucks and graders.
I know that, filling potholes.
Conditions in many parts of the county are very dry. I don't mind sharing with you that we have had a few calls, which we often do when we are experiencing even short-term drought, people asking us to put a stop to our dust in front of their houses, which is very difficult to do. But in any event, if conditions improve some and we get a little bit more rain, it, it helps everyone really, helps the grader operators, conditions, the roads and the people that have to live on, on Bay Roads and the county.
Great. All right, let's see, board members, requests, comments, and inquiries. I started last time with Commissioner Fleming, I'll start with you, Commissioner Wainwright.
Well, since we're all coming up to the altar at the Benedictian and we're testifying and all that.
Sharing our sins?
Yeah, I just, just a real quick note, and it's that time of year or this year campaigning and, and you, it kind of gets back to where the rubber meets the road and people ask you questions and you, it just kind of gets you back home a little bit and, it's been great that I've been able to brag about our department heads, management staff and employees. I'm, fellas, I'm, or folks, I can tell you that, and some of y'all have, have been participating out there and up here long before I came along even, but I dare say that we have amassed the best, I think the best management team yet. They do a tremendous job and our employees respond very well to them and all we're doing is asking them to do stuff and they're getting it done. And so my hat's off to all the department heads, please pass that on to your employees. I know I do when I see them out on the road. I saw a group trimming some trees today and I stopped and just said, "Thank you guys, I appreciate it." Anyway, that's all, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
I don't have anything this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sessions?
I didn't want to steal any Julie's thunder, but I was gonna mention there having that school bash, if you want to elaborate on that, tell everybody where and when and this weekend.
This is actually not a school district sponsored event, it is a community sponsored event, but the Back to School Bash is this Saturday at Swanee High School and it begins at 9:00 AM, I believe.
Nine to 11:00, yes.
Nine to 11:00. It is free backpacks and school supplies for anyone that comes, as long with a lot of booths with information, so everybody should come, it's gonna be wonderful.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Fleming?
Yes, sir, I'd like to, I didn't have any comments, I think the last couple of times, but I appreciate you for rescheduling this, this workshop, because it has been kind of burdensome to me, being pretty busy. I was sitting out looking at some of the members of the Douglas alumni and I know there wasn't, wasn't a world's going on with the work, but I'm glad that this has been postponed. I really wasn't prepared and I think it's a good idea, maybe we can get some things lined up, you know, the progress has begun, we're in the process of getting that work done. And it's, it's like giving me a mic at the church, you don't want to give me a mic, I talk a lot, I have the tendency to just say a few words. You gave me this opportunity, so I'm gonna speak.
Okay.
I, I also want to thank Mr. Scott for, Greg Scott for, he was talking about these guys in the shade, and I know that this inclement weather, it's hot and they need to take breaks every now and then. I'd be out on the roads and I, and I do see these guys from time to time relaxing, but I'm, I'm, I'm having common sense to know that they have gotten hot. And when he said that, I appreciate you, how you're supporting your workers, the people that work for you. And also, a couple of weeks ago, I noticed this big oak tree had fell at, at a church and I went out and looked at this big tree and how these county workers, these workers had to get out there and it worked. And just recently, on last week, I was, I got off from work and there was this big pine that fell and they took this big pine down across the road. A lot of times we don't know what these guys out there doing, but if you get out there and you ride, you ride with your supervisors, you see how they work, they work diligently. I know we're approaching our budget workshop and I did express to them, we need to sit down, I know they get that 1% per year, I think if I'm correct, but we need to figure out a way to, to show those guys that attaboy, something, some kind of appreciation for what they're doing for this county. You know, we see grass, it get, it get mowed, we see tree limbs, we see trees that fall across the road. So some type, some type of appreciation during our budget workshop, maybe we can come together and give them some type of appreciation, pay increase or something. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. I too am happy about the, having to postpone them because of the preparation, I'm not happy about the fact that we, the timeframe, that we got the books. I think that that needs to be a discussion that we have during budget workshops. But just to give the public an idea of what we're talking about here, last year we had around a $68 million budget, 67 and some change, this year we're looking at an $89 million budget. So that's a significant number to get your mind wrapped around with all the intricate details. Significant portion of that are the grants that are gonna be received from DOT and other sources that are specifically allocated for various projects around the county. And that is a direct attribution to administrative staff for working hard to get those dollars funded to our local community, so they deserve some props for that and bringing those dollars home to Swanee County. So having said that, that's all I have this evening. I don't think we have any informational items this evening that we have to consider, so I just need one thing, gentlemen.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
See you next time, folks.